Is, um, Nick?
Nick, and then there's another guy, Tony.
Oh, wow. Was it Tony Minzer? No?
No, Tony.
All right. Welcome, everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for January 2nd, 2024 City Council Meeting for the City of Lake Elmo. If you'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. If I, everybody's good with what's on there, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is hereby approved. Secondly, we have a presentation for five-year recognition for Mr. Jason Monroe of our Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Monroe has been with the city for five years now, and we'd like to recognize his service tonight. Jason has shown strong leadership and teamwork skills. He is the city's first certified playground inspector and the first MS4 inspector. So it's a, it's a big deal to the department and definitely an asset. He identifies inefficient, inefficiencies, offers solutions. He's quick to assist with city events such as National Night Out. He brings new ideas. He gets residents involved in those events. Staff has enjoyed working with Jason and looks forward to having him on the team for many, many more years. Again, we'd like to acknowledge that we see Jason's efforts and dedication and are so thankful.
Great.
I know she did. I saw that. I'm probably in it.
All right. Move on to public comments and inquiries. We have somebody that would like to speak in front of the council today. Just noting that we typically put six minutes on speaking time for this. Please maintain decorum in the matter. There will not be any comments or discussion after the public comment, but if there's something to get back to, then staff will be directed to do so. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Ms. Everson.
Thank you. Elizabeth Everson, 11075 34th Street North, Lake Elmo. Nice digs. Happy New Year.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
On December 5th, at your council meeting, you discussed an issue with 34th Street North parking signs because a resident had received a parking ticket there, and you acted very quickly and removed the no parking signs on the north side of the road. Unfortunately, this sort of created a lot more problems, and I've, in the packet of information that you've received, you can see that Marty and I were kind of exchanging emails about this. But there were a couple of points that I wanted to bring to the forefront today. First of all, I did have a petition signed by everyone who's affected by this on 34th Street. And as I was discussing this with them, each and every person without exception commented on when I said that those prior signs that we had that said resident parking only, no parking beyond, that those were unenforceable. And the residents all said without exception, yes, but they worked. So the petition is asking to have those signs reinstalled and the no parking signs removed. Part of the problem that we had is within a couple of days of removing those signs, because this is a busy season at the Lake Elmo, and the entire north side of the street was filled with cars, which sort of defeats the purpose of opening that so residents can park in front of their own properties. We can't possibly schedule everything around what we may or may not know as activities in Lake Elmo that would fill that up with parking again. And we have things like home healthcare, people who, by the way, had to park like two blocks away and haul her equipment in to visit one of the residents. We have repair people coming in that need to park on the street. If anybody wanted to work on any of the utility poles on the south side of the street, they would completely block everything. It's just kind of an untenable position that we're in right now, and we'd like to go back to the original signs that were in place for more than 20 years, said no parking beyond, resident parking only. I think I should explain to you why we're so, I don't know, enamored with those signs, I should say. We, we understand that they're not enforceable because, you know, sheriff can come along, and how would they know if somebody's parked there, whether or not they belong on the street? But in all the years that I've been there, in the 13 years I've been there, I can only count on one hand the number of times that I saw someone park there and then walk up to the end. So it's a deterrent. People actually don't park on the street. It works. So if we could please go back to that, that would be great. And I will tell you that when the sewer project was happening on Lake Elmo Avenue, we were all asking, you know, will those signs be replaced? Because, of course, they had to come down. And oh, yes, we were assured they'd be replaced. And then when the sewer project happened on our street, we asked the same question, will those signs be replaced at the end of this project? And we were assured that they would be. So we were quite surprised when the no parking signs came in, and we asked the question, well, how does that affect us as residents? Can we still park on our own street? And we were assured, yeah, no problem. Residents can still park here. But again, sheriff's deputy comes along, sees a car parked on a no parking, you know, they have to issue a ticket. So if we could go back to what was working in the past, that would be wonderful. Please contact me if you have any questions at all. And thank you, Marty, for going back and forth with me on this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Everson.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any further public comments at this time. The next agenda item is approval of the minutes from December 5th of 2023. Unless there's any issues with that from others on the council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December 5th of 2023.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from December 5th of 2023. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are hereby approved. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll read through the consent agenda if you'll bear with me. Item number two is approved payment and disbursements and payroll. Item number three is designate official depositories of Funds, Resolution 2024-001. Number four is designate official publication newspaper of record, Resolution 2024-002. Number five is adopt resolution designating data practice officials and approving cities' data practice policy, Resolution 2024-003. Item number six, designate authority for EFT payments, Resolution 2024-004. Number seven, approve release of warranty security for public utility improvements for Inwood Fifth Edition. Number eight, accept improvements and approve security reductions for the launch Crossroads First Edition. Number nine, accept improvements and approve security reductions for Union Park Second Edition. Number 10, accept improvements and approve security reductions for Savona Fourth Edition. Number 11, accept improvements and approve security reductions for Legacy of North Star Second, Third, and Fourth Edition. Number 12, approve release of warranty security for improvements for North Port First and Second Edition. Number 13, approve security reduction for Wildflower Fourth Edition. Number 14, approve pay request number six for Old Village Phase Seven, Street and Utility Improvements. Number 15, approve professional services agreement with Bolton and Mank. Number 16, approve personnel policy updates. Number 17, appoint city attorney civil and prosecution. Number 18, appoint city engineer. Number 19, approve hire of finance coordinator. Number 20, approve hire of community development director. Number 21, approve purchase of Public Works wood chipper. Number 22, approve purchase of Public Works grapple bucket. Given that, thanks for sticking with me through that. If, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? So we, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're getting to the regular agenda. First item is appointing a 2024 acting mayor in case of my absence. Getting to that. Hang on. Previously, Ms. McGinn had served as the acting mayor in my absence. So the floor is open to those of you who wish to be that person. Is there any, any takers? Or anybody want to nominate somebody?
I'll nominate Councilmember Holtz for the 2024 acting mayor.
Okay. Any others? Hearing none. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Councilmember Holtz? Okay. I'll ask the question. All those in favor of Councilmember Holtz being the acting mayor in my absence, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Councilmember Holtz will be the acting mayor. To comply with and fulfill all duties enumerated in Minnesota Statute 412.121 relating to selection of an acting mayor. Okay, so then we get to Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees. So this is basically people on the council that wish to, and I'm certainly willing to give up my seat on this. It's, I've served it on the last three years, certainly willing to do it again if need so. Councilmember Beckstrom has been with me on the Fire Relief Board as well. This would be for the year of 2024. Anybody interested in that?
I'd like to continue on this one.
Okay. Not hearing anything. I'll continue as well, if that's okay with the rest of the council. So I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Councilmember Beckstrom and Mayor Kadenhead to the Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees for 2024.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we get to an appoint a representative to the Cable Commission. I think this past year, that was Councilmember Hearn. City Lake Elmo appoints representative to Ramsey-Washington Cable Commission. As I stated, Councilmember Hearn did this in the last year, and former Councilmember McGinn was an alternate. Councilmember Hearn, is that something you'd entertain doing the next year?
Happy to continue.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-005, appointing, wait a minute. Appointing Councilmember Hearn as director to the Wash, Ramsey-Washington Cable Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need a secondary or alternate?
An alternate? I don't think that's necessary at the motion at this time. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. The Council School Liaison. The past council has designated a member to serve as liaison to the schools. The school liaison attends city council leadership meetings, events, and work collaboratively with the school on issues. The meetings are held on an as-needed basis, with the exception of the Montomedi School District, which holds meetings four times a year during the school year. Councilmember Holtz has been serving as the school liaison for the past year. Is, would Councilmember Holtz wish to be appointed as the liaison for 2024, or is there another council member that wishes to serve in that stat?
I would have no issue continuing to serve.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Councilmember Holtz as the school liaison for 2024. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Councilmember Holtz as the school liaison, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Appointments to the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission. The city has had two representatives, Councilmember Holtz and the planning director, serve Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission during the last two years. Those terms are up for Metropolitan Airport's Commission is again requesting the city make appointments for the 2023-2024 terms. They're requesting two representatives from Lake Elmo, a primary representative, and an alternate to serve on the commission. Who should council appoint to the Lake Elmo Airport Commission?
I would personally recommend that for sure, one staff member be one of the two, as to whether it's the primary or the secondary. I do not know the right answer to that. My experience in going to those meetings is it varies by the town. Some towns have their mayor as their person, some towns have a staff member as their person. So I kind of defer on that. I don't think there's a right answer on that, but I think we definitely should have a one and one.
Okay. I don't have a question. It's something for discussion, but I'd need a motion to do that. I have a question. Is there somebody on staff that you think would it be appropriate to be appointed to the Airport's Commission? I'll lean to you, Administrator Schroeder.
Yeah, you could appoint. I'd say the position of the administrator would be an appropriate appointment for this, and it would just carry through for the rest of a year after we replaced him with somebody else.
All right. Seems like an appropriate action. So I'll make a motion to appoint Administrator of the City of Lake Elmo as a representative to Lake Elmo Airport Commission, with an alternate being Councilmember Holtz. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Is that acceptable to you, Councilmember Holtz?
Sounds solid. Because I was the backup right now to Lisa previously, so.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion of appointing the city administrator with the alternate as Councilmember Holtz, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has passed. All right. Next up, Mr. First.
We're really blowing through the agenda tonight, so I'll try and keep it brief so you can keep on your roll. But I do want to talk a little bit about this application here for Bridgewater Village. It includes four different requests. So let me see here. I got the slides going. You can see them on the screen now along with the subject property. So the comprehensive plan amendment requested with this would re-guide the land, and we'll talk about that in brief. Rezoning to accompany the comp plan amendment, preliminary plat, and a conditional use permit specifically for a bank drive-through. So as a refresher for everyone, this is a 23, just over 23-acre site. The comprehensive plan guides this property for a combination of village, medium-density residential and commercial. The map you see on the right hand of the screen, that is the zoning map. Currently, this property is zoned rural transition, which, as you know, is more or less a holding zone until land is developed, at which point the developers requested a zoning that will comply with the comp plan, and that is village, medium-density residential and commercial. So there are really two primary, two land uses that will be on the site as proposed. There'd be four commercial lots, which are proposed through this plat, and there would be outlots that would be developed for residential at some point in the future, when the time is right for those properties to develop. One of those properties in the commercial lots would be Bridgewater Bank. They are behind this application, and their use would include that drive-through. So up on the screen, you can see the comprehensive plan amendment that's requested. On the left, you'll see the existing guidance, and on the right, the proposed guidance. The land areas are very close to being the same. There is a slight increase in the proposal for commercial land and a slight decrease for village, medium density residential, but these changes are very minimal and will not really impact things like density, et cetera. So there is a requirement to have a comprehensive plan amendment for this property because the development will change the, the location of those future land use areas. So we've gone back and forth, I would say, pretty extensively with the Met Council to make sure that it's required. It is a requirement, in short, for, for this project. So moving on to the rezoning application, the zoning districts would coincide with the requested future land use areas. So going from rural transition to those requested. And then just to touch briefly again on the site layout, so we've got those four commercial lots. Each of them are between about one and a half to two acres in size. We've got two office uses proposed at this moment. Bank, Bridgewater Bank on that southeast lot, and then retail on Lot 4, which is along the east boundary. So I would just note to you that those residential outlots, they're, they're not proposed to be developed at this time, of course, but the density of those properties in the future would range depending on what the developer is looking to build, but they would have to be built within the density range guided by the comp plan. That, in this case, means between 40 and 130 residential units. So on the screen, this is a master plan that's just showing how this may ultimately develop. We know those commercial lots are proposed to be platted right now, and then you can see how residential may look if and when requested in the future. We did a review of those four commercial lots, which are proposed to be developed now. Just to kind of cut to the chase, the development meets almost all of the zoning standards for this type of project. There is one zoning standard that we identified that we think they can correct, one of the commercial lots relative to the parking lot setback. So Commercial Lot 1, moving from west to east, this would be proposed as an office building. Commercial Lot 2 as an office building as well. Commercial Lot 3 on the southeast corner of the development, that would be Bridgewater Bank, for which we have the conditional use permit request. For drive-through facilities, there are a number of conditions, which it appears that this project will either meet or can meet once built, and we have more information on the elevations for the design as an example of the building. And we have, as staff, proposed conditions to the council should this proposal be approved for the conditional use permit. There are eight in the packet. Okay, so Commercial Lot 4 would be proposed as a retail building, mixed retail. So just as a note for you, those commercial lots are proposed in terms of area and minimum size. They'll, they'll meet the city code standards for this type of subdivision. We will, once those projects come in with specific uses on those sites, we will do the fine-grained detail of parking lot and site plan, all of those different elements of the site plan that we review for commercial development. So preliminary plat review is, you know, some of those things that we've looked at are on the screen here. We've looked at the land use and talked about that here. Lot size and area, landscaping we've reviewed, grading, stormwater, wetland impacts. There are no wetlands on this property. Public infrastructure that's proposed meets the city's standards, and there is parkland dedication required for this project. There is importantly no flexibility requested by the developer from the city's zoning and subdivision requirements. On the screen is the preliminary plat. We've got four commercial lots, two stormwater lots, and then the future residential lots. Landscaping was reviewed by the city's landscape architect. In short, the, the plans generally meet the city's requirements. There are some minor details that are proposed as conditions of approval that we work through with the developer should the council approve this development. For parkland dedication, you'll see that this property is located within a search area for a regional park, but not a neighborhood park, so Cache and Lou is recommended by staff and the city's Parks Commission. So city staff have had an opportunity to obviously review, including the city engineer, city's landscape architect, and the city's fire chief. All have provided some suggestions for conditions of approval, which have been incorporated into those conditions that, which are in your packet, should the city council wish to approve it. We've also gotten comments from Washington County, Valley Branch Watershed District, and the Met Council. So as mentioned, we have some conditions that are recommended for these different requests. We'll need four different approvals. So the first would be the comprehensive plan amendment. That would have one condition of approval, that it's approved by the Met Council. The rezon would be contingent as proposed by staff on the comprehensive plan and the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat would come with 20, I'd say, more or less standard conditions for this type of a project. That's a lot more of an extensive review, and the applicant would have to revise the plans to make sure that they, they address staff's comments. And then lastly, that conditional use permit would have eight conditions as proposed by staff. So the Planning Commission reviewed this project and held a public hearing on October 23rd of last year. No comments were received prior to, during that meeting or after the Planning Commission meeting regarding this proposal. There was a unanimous recommendation by the Planning Commission for all four requests. So at the last city council meeting, you'll remember that we tabled this item because we needed some more information on the water appropriations issue. And so I did, did want to mention, the city has a premature subdivisions ordinance. This articulates the, basically the findings that the city can make to deny a development and find it to be premature. So that was noted in the staff report as well. And lastly, I have included motions, again, for approval. Should the city council wish to approve this development, there would be five different motions to make. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions, and I know that the developer and Bridgewater Bank representatives are here this evening and eager to talk, talk to you about their proposal and answer any questions you might have.
Should we listen to the developer?
Yes.
If you'd like to speak, please. If you'd like to speak, please.
Thank you, Nathan. Matt Alexander, North Shore Development. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, staff, Ben. Here we are again. The plans came together again quite well, working through the process once we got past the omnibus bill back last spring where everything was resolved. And I understand that is a challenging, challenging topic, and one that you guys have to take into consideration. The one or two thoughts that I have had, and I'm also accompanied by Bridgewater Bank owner and CEO, and one of their executive officers who happen to be both Lake Elmo residents, so very close to, they have a vested interest in the opportunity. As working through the commercial plan, recognizing that the water is an issue, we employed the irrigation reuse plan. So for the entire development would be an irrigation reuse system. It's not a cheap endeavor, but we understand the situation. And frankly, the challenges that we faced here with the site, and I don't, Nathan, if I could back up to the slide where he showed the current comp or comprehensive plan site versus it compared to ours?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Great, is on your screen there? So you'll notice as the land goes to the north, that is the old county right-of-way that was zoned and, or not, sorry, zoned, but guided in the comprehensive plan to be the commercial area. Challenging part of this is, well, two parts. First, we had to acquire the right-of-way from the county, which we have. It's part of the application for the plat. The second part that's challenging is the county thought this was a great location to harvest all of the good soil for the entire property for their building of the new highway on the side. So that's, that was challenge one. Challenge two was, in order to create a village commercial or a commercial area, you have to have vehicular access. And you have a curb cut that was designed as part of the Stillwater Way and Stillwater Drive access that goes north into the site. I think that's Stillwater Drive. I get the Stillwater Way and Stillwater Drive mixed up sometimes.
Yeah, Boulevard.
Boulevard.
Casaw fourteen, yeah.
Point being, in order to get access to a commercial property and actually create commercial value, you need vehicular ingress and egress ability for banks, doctor's offices. You know, it's not a fast food restaurant, which we're proposing. But as you can see, we shifted the uses down in order to adequately access the site and get out of the site, but also in recognition that on the north, the old county right-of-way was unbuildable. And as far as having footprints of buildings on top. But technically not unbuildable, it's just very, very, very expensive to fix it, so you could build on it. So we went to the Met Council and separately and talked with staff, went to the Met Council representatives ourselves, saying, you know, this is, this is actually, just makes it actually functional versus a comp plan amendment, which is a very, or a comprehensive plan, which is a very broad brush. This just takes the same amount of acreage and makes it possible. So that, that's, we really didn't want to have a comp plan amendment because we understand the challenges of that. So that was the goal. We were not successful in that. But I will say that the Met Council did confirm this was administrative approval. This would not require a full metropolitan council vote. So that was our conversation with the Met Council, and I think we confirmed that between Nathan and Jenny and I. So that, that part, I think, is important. I think another part that is important is the water usage, and I get it, it's complex. The water usage of commercial lots being much less than residential subdivisions. So we have four commercial lots, office building, a bank. Someday, we show a retail building. Each one of those are going to have to come back in for final building approval. The residential portion in the concept plan that was shown is just that. It is a concept. We don't know who the builder is at this point. Whoever that builder is, we'll need to come back in here for a preliminary plat approval. So you'll at that time have perhaps some more understanding of your situation with the water. Hopefully, for your sakes, for everybody's sake of the community. And so we are asking for, to continue the investment that Bridgewater Bank has started out here. And there's, there are a couple of interested parties to build these office buildings, and we're very excited about those. And then, the real estate world that I live in, time kills deals. So challenging, when you have some opportunities, if that doesn't look like it's going to work out for whatever reason beyond somebody's control, then those opportunities go away, if they can. So we're hopeful to be able to move on this, this process that we began just about a year ago. And are very excited about the opportunity of having a Bridgewater Bank in this community and the supporting office uses around it. So, let's see, irrigation reuse, I think I got everything. I would like to have Jerry Bach, do you want to come say hello? I'm gonna make you, yeah.
So Jerry Bach, I actually don't live in Lake Elmo. I live in Baytown Township, so technically Stillwater. But Lisa Salazar is with me that's lived in Lake Elmo for twenty-eight years, and she's on our leadership team, our chief deposit officer. We're super excited to do something in Lake Elmo, so.
I think Matt's probably presented enough, and we wouldn't have invested this, in this town if we didn't think we were going to move forward with this and have a, have a great long-term project. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Council, questions? Go ahead. Councilmember Holt?
I was just curious, in terms of the Bridgewater Bank, how many potential jobs are you looking at between full-time, part-time?
Could you come to the podium, Mr. Bach?
Not Matt, so I'd say ten to eighteen.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Vextrum?
I'm not sure who to direct this question to. But when we discussed this in November, we had tabled it to see what would transpire with the court hearing and with the DNR as opposed to denying it at that, that meeting, which we were all pretty much on the same page. So I just, I want to ask, I don't know if it's Jack or Marty or Administrator Schroder. So has anything changed with our water situation since we first talked about this?
I can address that. So we did get a permit, provisional permit, that'd be temporary in nature from the DNR. It's a draft. They have asked for feedback. I did interact with DNR today for about forty-five minutes. They are open to us giving them feedback concerning language within there. And I have some specific language, which we would probably talk about on an agenda item at some point. One of the main concerns from, you know, from Marty and Jack and myself have been the permit allows us to go up to five thirty-five million gallons per year, provided we bring on a couple more neighborhoods plus Cimarron. And I believe that five thirty-five would be an appropriate number in my brief tenure of looking at it. The concern is, in 2027 in June, they basically, the permit reverts back to the current permit, which is about two-hundred-and-sixty million. We are currently not even close to that, which is the current permit, which is, we're pumping four-hundred-something, if I remember correctly. I asked him what that, specific why is that there? So in this, so he said, basically, in the last legislative session, there is two million dollars granted from the legislators for the Met Council to study a regional groundwater problems and solutions. The report for that is due in 2027. And they're anticipating that there'll be some sort of solution for the region which would allow them to adjust the permit to be appropriate for Lake Elmo's current situation. The person I talked to perfectly understands we can't get to two-hundred-and-sixty million today, and we can't add more properties and still get to two-hundred-and-sixty. That's even less logical. So given, given that, I think from a council perspective, you know, if we look at accepting that permit and going to five thirty-five, there certainly is water. The question is, what happens in 2027? Well, you're hoping that they'll have some sort of plan from the Met Council that would address this regional issue. And then they would adjust the permit at that point from that. They also understand, I mean, if the, if the solution is surface water, as you have heard many times from St. Paul, you know, that would still be years and years and years away from that, too. So there isn't any known fact for what the solution is. That being said, I think they understand the situation we're in.
So it's fair to say that nothing has really changed other than conversations. Follow-up question to Director Powers. I inquired earlier today, just rough estimate what we pumped in 2023. And are you able to provide a rough estimate of how many gallons we pumped for the city in 2023?
Sure. At the beginning of December, we were roughly five-hundred-and-fifteen million. Just kind of doing our average, we should be close to that, five thirty, five thirty-five by the end of the year. We should have those numbers here in the next day or so.
Thank you. So we would be exceeding without adding in the seven-hundred-plus homes that the DNR is requiring in their permit. We're already kind of at that number of five thirty-five. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hearn?
Just a little follow-up with that, for Administrator Clark here. In the permit, it talks about if we accept it, we have to withdraw our contested case. If we fail to withdraw this case, our permit will remain at two-hundred-and-sixty million. Can you speak on that a little bit, as far as what we would be withdrawing from, what opportunities we could miss because of that?
I'll add a little bit, then I'll ask Sarah to weigh in on this. We are meeting, as I had mentioned earlier, with the attorney, Jim Thompson, who is the attorney from Kennedy Gravens, who's dealing with the contested case hearing. We are still waiting on their lawyers with the ten municipalities, which include us, to give their summaries to the judge. The judge will be ruling, I don't know, maybe in February. So whatever we're deciding is a ways away concerning where we want to respond to this. And yeah, withdrawing the contested case, what would that mean, Sarah?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, basically, it's a settlement offer from the DNR. If we were to accept the permit, we'd have to withdraw the contested case, and we wouldn't, you know, the judge would not make a decision with respect to Lake Elmo. So we'd be done, and we'd have to live with what we've taken the settlement offer with the DNR. However, you know, I just would caution the council about talking about this in open session. This is pending litigation, and we shouldn't be discussing our strategy or whatnot with the DNR during an open, public meeting.
Okay, I had a question on the, on the comp plan amendment. It's indicated that that's administrative, so they've given indication that that will be acceptable to them?
Yeah, I think that in my conversations with the Met Council secretary for Lake Elmo, it's been indicated, at least to me, it seems that this is a pretty minor amendment, all things considered. In terms of the things that, you know, we're looking at from a land use perspective, the density of the city overall will not change at all or very, very negligibly. So because they're really not changing much at all of the guidance for this land, I don't think that it will be seen as an issue. And the city approving it would, I think, make the Met Council very likely to approve it as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hearn?
All right, one more, just to confirm. Because I know the developer was saying, I just want to confirm, there would be another preliminary plat that would come for the residential side?
That's absolutely correct. So there, it would be platted as an outlot, and then the developer would come in with a preliminary plat. Very likely, the city would be requiring whatever residential development were to come in, would have to go back through the plating process, especially if there's things like public streets going through it, which I would imagine there might be.
Okay.
Any further questions? Yes, Councilmember Vextrum?
Nathan, I wonder if you could just explain a little bit about the PUD process and when, what limitations we have in denying a development that has gone through or started that process?
Yeah, so in this case, we actually do not have a planned unit development. We're in a, we're not, the developer is not requesting any flexibility from the city. That being said, they are going through the plat process. And this is, this is a decision that the city has to obviously make findings to support its approval for developments, but also if it's going to deny, it would have to do the same thing. So there's some limitations. We talk about a conditional use permit, that's a quasi judicial review. So if something, a conditional use permit kind of meets the findings that are laid forth in the ordinance, the city should be approving it. So I'm getting into the weeds of city attorney, the city attorney area, but I think that's maybe a good, high-level overview.
Thank you. So the gist of it is, if we approve to move forward, there's, we don't have as much flexibility if we don't resolve our water issues and we're in the same spot.
Sure, I think I understand. So if the question is, when, when, when should we deny? Like, if you're looking specifically at premature subdivisions, the time to deny them based on that finding is at the stage of preliminary plat? That is the case?
Thank you.
Councilmember Hearn?
With the permit from the DNR, if we go through having discussions with that, how soon could that be approved and have it in writing that, you know, we are permitted the four-hundred-and-seventy up to five-hundred-and-twenty-some million gallons? Any thoughts on that?
You know, I, you know, I guess as Sarah said, you know, we're in this contested case. We're doing summaries. The judge has yet to rule. In my opinion, we wouldn't even address this issue until we heard back from the court because there could be a positive outcome, there could be a negative outcome for us. So I don't think either case, we would be discussing this. Sarah?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I were the DNR, I guess I would be saying, you know, this offer is good until, you know, I don't think they're going to say, well, yeah, you can wait and see what the judge does and then take the better deal. You know, we're kind of stuck with the court ruling if that comes out before we agree to take the DNR's offer here. So I would think they would want us to accept that sooner rather than later.
And if we did take their offer, that would be, I mean, would that be within two months, where we would then have the permit for up to five-hundred-and-twenty-some million? Could be less if we don't approve some of those very, the variations that they included with it?
Yeah, it's contingent upon the neighborhood development and bringing water to that site. But staff have not weighed in on this. We haven't had a meeting specifically about this permit from both the staff and from the legal side. And so I would be hesitant to give you any timeline of what we would do. I guess my question, you know, you know, to Nate would be, if we don't respond by a certain time, what time, what timeline is that? I mean, the city has to respond within a certain timeline on this, right?
Oh, yeah. So the, if the question is, how long do we have to render a decision on these applications? That would be, we have one more meeting of runway left before a hundred-and-twenty days expires. So that gives us one additional city council meeting on the sixteenth of January.
Well, for discussion's sake, I'm going to move to adopt Resolution 2024-006 approving the comprehensive plan amendment request for Bridgewater Village with the findings and conditions therein.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just would like to point out that the last time we discussed this, we had a five-member council. We now have a four-member council.
Yep.
And under the statute for a comp plan amendment, I think you're all aware that it does require a two-thirds vote of all the members of the council.
Right.
And now you don't count the vacant seat. So it is a three members that you would need, not four.
Correct. Yep. Square. So I guess in discussion, I know that the city's in a pinch here, and we've known that we're, as somebody alluded earlier, between a rock and a hard place on the water appropriation. I know in our comp plan, this location's indicated as developed between the years of 2020 and 2030. I am a fan of this development primarily because my feeling is that... I am a fan of this development primarily because my feeling is that businesses are needed in the city of Lake Elmo to help it thrive, provide jobs for people, for people, for, for the tax base. I understand that the water current, but I also have the utmost confidence in, in the DNR, Met Council, the legislature to come up with a way to serve the city of Lake Elmo water in the long term, whether that's a open water source or some other means. I don't, I don't want that to hinder Lake Elmo from opportunities being presented to itself. I'm sure that I'll draw some ire of some people for that opinion, but that's my opinion. And so I'm, I'm going to be on board with at least doing the comp plan amendment request for this, this service. Councilmember Holtz?
I agree with those statements. And I should note, at our prior meeting, we did not give an opinion one way or the other. We tabled it. And I know on my end, what I expressed was disgust and dismay of the water topic itself, and especially the White Bear Lake lawsuit and the horrifically flawed decision that the court made in that instance. But I did not provide an opinion on this because we did not have a vote on it. So I want to make that clear. In this case, when we were talking about the comp plan, the changes that we're looking at are very slight as shifting of a couple, of not even an acre and shifting locations. And I see absolutely no reason not to update the comp plan in this manner based upon a project that serves the city, it benefits the city, tax base is a critical element for us. And as we start to work down the later aspects of these approvals, obviously, water reuse and irrigation will come up as well, and I'm sure the water permit will come up later. But for purposes of the comp plan, to me, this is a pretty straightforward slight altering.
Councilmember Beckstrom?
The comp plan amendment changes is slight. I certainly recognize that. But I, I don't, I don't see moving forward with a comp plan change when this development is premature. And I'm going to stick with what I've been saying for the last six months related to development. It's, we do not have water. We don't have water. Yes, these are great developments that come before us and would be wonderful in our city. But if we just simply continue to approve developments, then where, where is any leverage in, in making change or getting change from these entities that are putting us in this rock and a hard place? There isn't. And based on the numbers, we can, we can hope and pray and, and such with the DNR. But let's also be honest that we've been in negotiations with the DNR for how many months? How many years to try to get this to change? And the best they can do is what was sent in the temporary permit, which the base water usage is 472 million gallons. And we're going to be at 535 by the end of this year. That's, that's above what they're even permitting us on a temporary basis. To get to the 535 in the permit, we are required to add 204 homes that have PFAS contamination. We are required to add the 500-plus homes in Cimarron simply to get to the 535 in that permit. We are already there. We are there and we can be fined for being over. So what happens if we were to approve this, take on the temporary permit that limits us to 535, and we're already there? We are still then in the same position we are today with the threat of being fined. This would be a fine on our city. And how can we ethically continue to approve developments when we know full well we are well above the appropriation level that is allowed and even being proposed at this point? To me, that is irresponsible for us to do that. And quite honestly, the only thing that has changed since this came before us on November 8th is a school that's been proposed in Lake Elmo that will require water. That is the only thing that has changed and has created a stir in our community. And so are we now going to approve every development coming through because there's a need and a want for a school that will use a great deal of water? That's my fear, is that this is simply politics to get a school in here versus doing the right thing for our community. So I'm sorry, this is a great development. I, I wish we had the water, but I simply cannot ethically approve developments when we don't have the water and we don't have a solution anywhere in the near future.
Councilmember Hearn?
I feel like I need to go back to a question. With the deadline for the for the deadline for the, is it for the, what was the deadline that you were talking about?
Councilmember, there's a 120-day deadline for land use applications in Minnesota. That's by state statute. So we're up to the 120 days after the next city council meeting.
And if we move forward with the comprehensive plan, does that impact that? Do we satisfy that or is that about the preliminary plat?
So it would be for all, all four of the applications. So they're all on a 120-day deadline for a decision.
And if we would move forward with the comprehensive plan, but the preliminary plat does not get through, is there, is there a route for the developer to still move forward in the future?
So if you were to, let's say that, so you have to render a decision. And so if the city were to approve the comp plan amendment but deny the preliminary plat, just as an example, the developer would need to come back before the city for a preliminary plat application. But they can only do so for, typically, and I have to review this in the city code for you, but typically, within a year's timeframe, they cannot apply unless there's new information.
Unless there's?
New information.
Could new information be that there's a change in our permit allowed or are allowed water usage via the permit?
I would think so, but I'd want to defer to the city attorney on kind of what the, what the city will typically want to do in that scenario.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that might be a valid reason to allow them to come in earlier than the one-year requirement. But once again, we'd have to take a look at the code.
Okay, thank you. So I, you know, I, I do think there have been other changes. I think this is a positive change with this letter that we got from the DNR. It still isn't, it isn't there yet, but it's progress. If, if that is the case where, once that is approved, and we have it in writing that we have somewhere between the 470 million to 520-some million gallons of water, I think that's the time for the conversation for the preliminary plat. I would love to be able to keep this moving forward. And if by moving forward with this comprehensive plan amendment allows that to continue, I'm open to that. And I think it's maybe a compromise to keep the conversation going, give the developer and the owners of the bank the opportunity to stick with us a little longer and hope and pray that we get the allotted amount of water that we need to make this go forward without going over our allotted amount of water usage. I agree with what you said, though. Even if we do get this permit, we're still over it. So I can't say if it would necessarily change the situation down the road with the preliminary plat in my mind.
So I'm just going to say that part of, part of the point of the issue on the water usage in Lake Elmo is the court dictated 75 gallons per capita, per person, and, and 90 gallons. Is it per, per business, per day, or per, I can't remember what, what does the 90 refer to again?
90 is everything divided by people, 75 is the people.
People. We do have some very large lots that we've, we've put on a PFAS. And I think some of that's indicated in the numbers that represent. Isn't represented, the PFAS addition homes have been addressed. The larger lots have not been addressed due to irrigation. And the report shows statistically valid numbers that the water usage in Lake Elmo affects White Bear Lake by one-tenth of one inch over a 20-year span. I just can't let go of that. Is that, that's the correct number, is it not?
That is correct, .11 feet.
.11 feet over a 20-year period. I'm going to be a little dogged about that number. It's, 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 it's highly, I, I've got no problem with my ethics because my ethics are for the city of Lake Elmo and what's best for the city in the long term. And I do think that there are great minds out there that are going to get us to where the water's going to be. These opportunities don't, don't come around all the time. And why, why the city of Lake Elmo and the residents should be forced to sit by on standstill on the sidelines while others are not because of some flawed concept, at least that's my opinion. So that's, I'm just, I'm not going to take that no as an answer for me. So I've used my two-time speaking. If anybody else wishes to address anything else, feel free. Councilmember Holtz?
A clarifying question for staff, and it might be for Marty or Jack. I know our, our permit itself hasn't changed since 2014. When did we first start to go over? Like 16-ish, 2017?
That was before my time. I started in 2018 and we were well above already, so likely 16.
And it, we can, we can write books about how flawed the White Bear Lake case is, because it is. But in terms of consistency, we have been above the amount since every one of us has been on this council. And it predates Councilmember Hearn. But on the, on the previous side, when it was with Councilmember Dale and Lisa, councilmembers, we approved well over 1,000 housing units while above the permit. The underlying conditions have not changed. If the DNR wanted to fine us at that point, they had every ability to. So I, if we're talking about ethics, to me, ethics is also about consistency. And as the mayor said, it is serving our city, our comp plan. And again, I don't want to talk about legal strategies in public. I think that that would be a, do us a disservice. So I want to make my comments very limited in that regard. But this is for our city. And we have development rights in our comp plan. We have a valid usage here. And this is to be, this is also consistent with what we have done unanimously as a council on project after project after project while we were above the limit. So I don't know what has changed now that would cause us to now take a step back. And I do not believe it's appropriate to use applicants as leverage. And I'm not even quite sure that it's ethically or legally responsible.
Councilmember Beckstrom?
Well, I believe when you know better, you do better. And we learned this past year that all of our efforts from the legislature, hoping that the legislation that was passed would solve the problem, it did not. It did not. We hoped and looked to the DNR and our negotiations. And Administrator Hans had about the same deal that, that they sent us in our temporary permit. So I would say that is not progress. And we hit the end of the road, quite honestly, this year, and that is what's different. Yes, we unanimously approved past developments because there was this path in front of us to get this resolved, which was legislation, which was the DNR, which was the contested case. And we are at a point where, where do we go next? Because the DNR has made it perfectly clear in their temporary permit documentation, they are bound to the court order for the 90-gallon calculation. That, to me, says they are not going to change that calculation unless they are required to change those calculations based on the court order changes. And so we can hope and pray and, and see this as progress. But quite honestly, it is not progress, what we received. And again, when you know better, you do better. I'm tired of getting beat up online by residents saying, council's not doing anything about water. Why do they continue to approve developments when they're limiting our irrigation? And why are they continuing to do that? Don't they know what they're doing? I mean, I think we already heard that this, this, earlier this evening in some of our council member interviews. They think we're not doing our job. And quite honestly, if we continue to approve developments knowing we do not have a solution to our water issue, we are not doing better. We, we are being complacent with, with the entire situation. And to me, it's just simply irresponsible. It's, it's not in the best interest of Lake Elmo to continue to approve developments when we know better and we don't have a plan to resolve it.
All right. Given that discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2024-006, approving the comprehensive plan amendment request for Bridgewater Village with findings and conditions therein, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes three to one.
Move to adopt ordinance 2024-01, approving the zoning map amendment request for Bridgewater Village and the findings and conditions therein.
I'll second that. So here, it's just a zoning map amendment, request for Bridgewater Village with the findings and conditions. And that just changes some of the zoning applications for medium-density commercial, correct?
Yep, Mayor and Council, the zoning will reflect the comp plan guidance.
All right.
This is basically to re, to make sure they're paired correctly.
Correct, to go from what's currently rural transition to the village of medium-density and commercial.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the question. Move to adopt ordinance 2024-01, approving the zoning map amendment request for Bridgewater Village with the findings and conditions therein. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three, one. Going to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-007, approving the preliminary plat for Bridgewater Village with findings and conditions therein.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
So point of clarification. Again, this is not the preliminary plat then for the residential aspect. This is for the commercial side.
That is correct. This is only for those, for commercial lots and then to separate the storm pond outlots and the outlots that would be likely preliminary platted in the future if they want to pursue a residential development.
Thank you. Discussion. Councilmember Hearn?
So I'm not ready to move forward with this. I, I'm very hopeful that with the permit from the DNR, the offer, that we can have a conversation as a council and we can figure out how to move forward and increase our allotted water for the city of Lake Elmo. I've been inconsistent with this once. That was after the legislation passed. I was hopeful. It didn't make the difference. I think I've learned my lesson that I would prefer to wait to see what we are trying to accomplish actually happen first before we start moving forward with making decisions. I think that is kind of the, the definition of the premature subdivision. I want to make sure that we are ready for this. I understand the difficulty now of it's going past the timeline. My hope with my understanding then is that if we are allotted more water with the permit, that that could be a change and that the developer could come back to council and give this presentation again. If I'm incorrect on that, let me know.
I just, sorry, Mayor and council wanted to just clarify the city's options. If you're looking to hear what they are at this time with this application. So city can approve, approve with conditions. City can deny, which it should do so with findings. And we would, if you're gonna deny, recommend that we bring a resolution of denial back in front of you. The other option is that the developer can request additional time. This is in, in lieu perhaps of denying the development. They can request more time to come back at a later date. But I would want to have them kind of speak to that request to you in person.
Could a condition be based on the, the results of the, the permit that was offered by the DNR?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, it has to be something very definitive. So you're saying it's not approved until something happens. So you'd have to, you know, you say, well, a permit that's satisfactory to the city, you know, is issued by, you know, what does that mean? And then you gotta get into that. So I think you'd be better off if the developer's willing to agree to an extension of this 60, 120-day decision timeframe. You know, that would not have a denial on their record and they'd be able to just, we could just move it forward when the time comes. That would probably be the best option here because I think we might end up with a two-two vote. And then we gotta do a denial resolution. And, you know, then there's a question of whether they can even bring it back within that one-year timeframe. So I, I think maybe the best option would be to see if they would agree to an extension on the preliminary plat.
Obviously, that's easy for us to say.
Yeah.
That's my preference, but I, obviously, that's easy for us to say and not very easy for you guys. So I, you know, I apologize for that.
Do we need a motion to ask that of the developer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would need the developer to come up to the podium and then basically agree on the record that they're agreeing to an extension. And they can agree, they, it's their decision on how long of an extension they want. You know, they could say, well, we'll give you the, you know, first meeting in February, or we'll give you six months. You know, it, it's up to them. I guess you can ask them. You could say, we'd suggest, you know, a couple of months or, and see if they're willing to agree to that. So it's just something that needs to be negotiated and they need to agree to it on the record. And then I would also confirm that in writing with them after the meeting.
Would the developer want five minutes to conference out in the hallway with the owner?
I, I would like to do that, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mayor, would that be acceptable?
Let's, uh, point of, what do you call it, point of preference?
Point of personal privilege.
Yes.
Councilmembers, tricky situation. The, with, with the comp plan and the zoning approved, we understand the conditional use permit is, without that, without the drive-through bank is not a bank. We would ask the council to consider approval of the conditional use permit for the drive-through subject to and conditioned upon the preliminary plat someday being approved, which should be at the later time when we come back and we would agree to table the preliminary plat application at this time.
All right. So how much time did you, would you like to have extended for that?
Well, when is the DNR negotiation? Can't talk about that.
I wish I knew.
Mayor?
Yes.
May, may we have Sarah opine on one issue?
Sure.
I appreciate that. If we're, if we're going to be, you know, I mean, talk about what, what this means if we're gonna do all future developments. I, I was in a planning meeting today. We had dozens of items we're dealing with in front of us. This is just one of many that will come. What does that mean if we basically say no development in this, in the city for the next, you know, five years?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, this does set a precedent under the city's premature development ordinance. So if you are to deny it based on that, then, you know, I think you're gonna be kind of forced to do that for other developments in the city. And likewise, if you are to approve it and not use that, that tool as a, you know, as a means for denial, then it's, you know, quite possible that you're not gonna be able to deny other developments on that, on that premise because you approved this one. So that's just something to, to keep in mind when you're considering this, this issue. Although, you know, at this point, if you're gonna have an extension, you'll have more time to consider that, I guess.
Clear as mud. So.
Swampy backwaters of the Mississippi.
Yeah. The, is it possible legally to have an approval of the conditional use permit that it'll be subject to and conditioned upon the future approval of the preliminary plat? And then we table the preliminary plat today?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that's acceptable. You know, I mean, the property won't be subdivided because you're not approving the preliminary plat. So there's really nothing they will be able to do with the property until that subdivision occurs with the preliminary plat approval. But if you want to give them the, the CUP at this point, I guess you could do that with the condition that, you know, they do need to get the prelim, the property subdivided in order to build the bank there.
Is there identifying language in the CUP that would not connect the dots because it had not been platted yet?
I'm just looking at the resolution.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to defer to the city attorney on this issue, but the findings in the resolution for the conditional use permit are based on those that are in the city's ordinance. And so the use meets those criteria, then the city should be granting conditional use permits. In this case, we were able to identify that the bank drive-through would meet four of the six conditions. And we understood that the bank very likely would meet the other two just based on how it was designed. If, you know, when they come forward, they would be providing plans, which we haven't seen yet. But we, you know, all we'd really need to see is that the, the drive-through, is it compatible in design? And with the, the main structure? So that was really the, the primary issue on that one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The approval resolution for the CUP does say that one of the conditions of approval is approval of the preliminary and final plat of Bridgewater Village. Prior, that must be done prior to the establishment of this use. So you could approve the CUP. And then, you know, there's a condition that basically says the plat needs to be approved before they can establish the bank.
Okay.
The drive-through.
Councilmember Baxstrom.
Just a clarifying question because I'm not, so I understand the situation a little bit better. So what, so what is the, what's the benefit of approving the CUP now versus with preliminary plat? I'm, I don't know what that would be. I'm just trying to understand why you'd want it now versus, maybe the developer could, I don't know.
I guess from my perspective, councilmember, it streamlines the process for the developer. Once the city is ready to approve the preliminary plat, they've got everything else in place that they need to proceed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Yeah, that's helpful.
So we still have a motion on the table, correct?
No.
No, we do not have a motion on the table yet. All right.
Move to adopt Resolution 2024-008, approving the conditional use permit for Bridgewater Bank with the findings and conditions therein.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
That was for the conditional use?
That's for them to have a drive-through for the bank teller system, essentially, in a nutshell.
Did we say language needed to be added to that then?
No.
No.
Okay.
Any discussion? Councilmember Baxstrom.
I denied the other, but this is something I certainly would support. It's gonna streamline the process. And, and I'm optimistic that, that you'll, we'll get this preliminary plat, we'll get the water. So I, I wanna think positive about the future. And so I'll support the conditional use permit because, I mean, we want this, it's just, we want water too, so.
All right. I'm gonna call the question. Move to adopt Resolution 2024-008. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution's adopted.
And Mr. Mayor, I did check my notes and the preliminary plat, there was a motion on the table for that. So I guess I would have the, it's like you were the motion maker on that.
I'll rescind that motion.
Councilmember Holtz was the seconder.
I'll rescind, rescind my second. So do we need to, still need to table the preliminary plat?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess I would have the developer go on the record as to what extension he's willing to agree to. And then, then you can table it to that point.
Because right now, we have until the second council meeting this month, is that, that's right? So let's see, we request to table an extension to, for 30 days or it would be in the second council meeting then in February? Is that, is that? Yes, please, we'd like to.
Out one month from our current, roughly.
Thirty days from the 16th, roughly?
Yeah.
The second council meeting in February.
Second council meeting in February, we'd like to extend. We'd be willing to extend it. And if something changes in the, in the DNR permit, we would maybe request at that time, if there's enough time, to get the, the city application or the staff report together to go out earlier than that.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would just invite a motion to postpone the preliminary plat resolution. I think that's the only one we have left.
I'll make, well, do we, we gotta do the publication for the zoning map amendment, right?
We still need the summary publication.
Yep.
All right.
And that does not, that only applies to the zoning map?
That's only for the zoning change, correct?
Splendid. Move to adopt Resolution 2024-009, approving the summary publication of ordinance 2024-01.
I'll second that. Any discussion as it's a publication on the two previous items?
And, Mr. Mayor, this does require four votes.
Okay. All is in fire, in favor of adopting Resolution 2024-009, approving the summary publication of ordinance 2024-01, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm gonna move to postpone the Resolution 2024-007 to the second council meeting in February with permission from the developer to do so. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of tabling and moving the adoption of Resolution 2024-007 to the second council meeting in February, please signify by saying aye.
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 So moved, all right.
Mayor and council, may I request some clarification? So if there is some ability to provide updated information prior to that and for staff to get the issue in front of you, would it be fine or acceptable to bring it forward sooner?
Yes.
As requested?
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. I think that's all we have on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Monamida School District had a meeting with communities recently. And myself and Administrator Schroeder were there. And Monamida is in the process of doing a facility review plan. And they'll be potentially going for a bond to update a couple of their facilities. The process, from what I gathered, is pretty similar to what 834 did recently as well. They have some, some other topics going on. They're increasing the amount of trail access to their schools using some of the federal grant dollars that are out there. But all in all, it seemed like there was a good productive meeting. Got a lot of information from other cities as well about the water topic. But things are going well in Monamida School District.
Thank you. I don't have anything to, this evening. Councilmember Baxstrom?
No report.
Councilmember Hearn?
No report.
Staff reports, anything?
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna commend the staff of Lake Elmo. I had no idea how much work you guys are doing. We had a development review meeting today where we had all the staff talk about all the current developments and all the upcoming developments, which we have a bunch coming. And this... And this document has like 45 items that the city's working on, either on an ongoing basis or projects coming before the city. And so that was—I just want to say, I was really impressed with the organization of what the staff's doing and how you're putting it together. Just very impressive. DNR, I gave an update on that. I would recommend that after we have a legal meeting and staff meeting concerning maybe a recommendation for our response to this, that we enter into a closed session meeting with the council to give our feedback and have you to make a decision. And by that point, hopefully, we will have a fifth council member here, which will also help guide this discussion. I am meeting with the school district tomorrow along with staff to discuss their next steps for their proposal to come before the cities and what they would need to present to us in order to be considered for their development. We—just to remind everybody, we are going to have a special meeting next week at 5:45 to interview one last council member applicant before the City Council and Parks Joint Committee at 6:30. So make sure you put that on your calendar. We met with MPCA last week concerning information that's going to be forthcoming with them. And one of the city initiatives that we will be working on with feedback and information from staff is putting something on the website that details the water history, how did we get to this point, you know, and why are we here and what decisions have to be made and what has to change in order to address this. It'll be a rather long document, but we'll just start off simply by addressing the current and then start filling in backwards. So if any staff have information and history about the water, please give it to me and I'll start putting something together like that. That's it.
You want to comment on the new hire and when they're starting?
Go ahead.
The finance coordinator is going to start January 25th. It's a Thursday. And the community development director is going to start February 5th, which is a Monday.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to remind residents again to please watch your mailboxes for notification of a polling place change for this coming election cycle, which starts actually in March with the presidential primary. So please keep an eye open for that. And with that, we would also like to hear from folks who may want to serve as election judges this year. City provides training, snacks, and you get an hourly pay. So it's a lot of fun. Contact us if you're interested.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have no other reports. No reports.
Johnson, Nathan?
No report.
Marty?
No report.
Chief?
No report.
Jack?
Just wanted to let the council know that the county has the open house scheduled for a week from tomorrow, January 10th, on the Trunk Highway 36, Lake Elmo Avenue interchange. It's—